So, I'm going to ask Chandra to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current Agrover Township. Notice was also delivered that day to township clerk and posted on the board support in Township Hall. Advertise notice for virtual streaming of this meeting was posted on our website and on social media on Friday, November 6.
Thank you. May we have roll call?
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Summer, absent. Mrs. Salagi?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here.
Oh, did I miss Mrs. Sullivan?
No.
No, I do that.
Okay, can we please all stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just as one.
Thank you, everyone, again, and welcome. Thank you for coming to our work meeting. So, I want to just start out by congratulating all of our school board candidates for a great race. At this point in time, our leaders are Patrick, Mike, and Tamika. However, I do want to point out that we do not have certified results. The law requires those to be compiled by the 23rd of November. Hopefully, we'll have them sooner. And I want to just reiterate some things quickly that I have been saying all along. I want to start out by thanking our teachers and our staff for all the great work you're doing every single day. We're in the middle of this horrible pandemic. It continues, and students are learning, and we appreciate everything that you all do. I'm sure everyone is aware, we are headed into a second wave. Some think a third wave. Some think it's a fall spike due to the weather, whatever the case is. We have an increase in cases. We have some cases in the district. Most districts do, and especially those that are like ours. Larger districts have some cases, but fortunately, we've kept them to a minimum. So, we're doing everything in our control to do our part to stop any sort of spread here. And what I want to do is just ask everyone involved, our school community, please do your part when you're away from school. Follow the rules so that nothing comes here to the school, and we can keep doing what we're doing. I want everyone to be conscious of the fact that things change with this pandemic weekly, daily, hourly. So, we all have to be ready for the fact that things could change and be ready to adapt to that. I want to speak a little bit, just briefly, on the nature of our meeting. We're now under new Open Public Meetings Act regulations. They have a lot in common with the old ones, but there are some differences. So, we decided this week it was time to return to a true in-person meeting. So, that's what this is tonight. This is an in-person meeting where commentary is made in person. However, we still are continuing, not only with recording and broadcasting, but also live streaming so that the public can watch it live from home as well. And we will, of course, continue to evaluate, reevaluate how that works for us. We'll discuss it. You can discuss it later in the meeting. We always do have the option of a hybrid meeting, so we'll talk about that again a little later. So, again, thanks, everyone, for coming out. Thank you to our staff for what you do, and I wish our students the best as they make their way through this school year. And with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to our superintendent, Dr. Grucchio.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Castellano, appreciate the acknowledgement, and thank you to our staff, faculty, teachers, and administration. We appreciate you. Welcome to our November meeting, and I'd like to share a message that I shared with my staff and our community recently, that November is known as National Gratitude Month and is annually observed in November. Gratitude is more than saying thank you. Gratitude has amazing powers. It has the ability to shift us from focusing on the negative and appreciating the positive that we have in our lives each and every day. And I encourage my staff every day to ask themselves, what am I thankful for today? 2020 has been one of the toughest years ever and has presented us all with different feelings: frustrations, emotions, questions, wonder, fear, anxiety, anger at times, disbelief, and confusion, just to name a few that I personally can relate to. We have all had to adjust, readjust, and change the norm in our daily work and our lives, and I recognize this. It's newness everywhere. I am grateful for my faculty, staff, administration, this Board of Education, our school district, includes students and parents. Everybody's been a part of this journey, been a part of the planning, and everyone has to make those needed adjustments almost every day now, and I appreciate your cooperation and understanding. Please know that we are trying our best and we give our best each and every day. So, let's take some time to think about where we came from, where we began back in March, April of last year, and let's be thankful for all that's been done to get us to this point, and thankful for the work that we're doing as we move forward. With that, I'll share some updates. The track and field situation, or I should say project, our track is in. It's waiting to be striped. It looks great. It's very colorful in terms of school colors, and I spoke yet last week with the installers, and they're very, very proud of the Agrover Township project. The turf is here. It's being installed now, and what an amazing process that is. It came in rolls. It was unrolled. It was stitched together, and today I witnessed the lines going in. It doesn't come with lines or markings, and that all has to be cut out, and then everything from hash mark to a number 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, and the Agrover Township logo is all cut out in the turf and glued in, and then, you know, groomed afterwards. Sometime beginning of next week, the fill will go down into the turf, so it'll start looking a little bit more stable, but it looks great out there. It's very exciting. As the end zone, one end zone has eagles in it, and probably by tonight, the second end zone has eagles in it as well. So, just wanted to give you an update that there is progress out there. As Mr. Castellano said, we are experiencing COVID cases. We are very transparent in the cases that we have. I want to make sure everyone realizes that we do have a dashboard which is located on our website, which provides information on the number of cases and in the schools in which they are. We, Agrover Township, as well as our local public schools in the area, are working hand-in-hand with the Atlantic County Department of Public Health, and we are experiencing cases that have been brought into our schools. So, like Mr. Castellano said, let's all work together and do our best in terms of social distancing, wearing our masks correctly, keeping ourselves healthy away from, you know, gatherings, and just being diligent of what we need to do to keep each other healthy. We have strict health and safety guidelines in place here in our school district, and we will continue to stress the importance of the health screening that has to be done by faculty, staff, and students, proper PPE, washing our hands, and social distancing. And again, what's done outside the school buildings certainly does affect the inside of our school buildings. So, as we watch the numbers in our state, and the numbers locally increase, just want everyone to know that behind the scenes, we are working on scenarios to be prepared for anything that comes our way. For example, some schools in the areas have delayed their hybrid such plans. Some have pivoted to all virtual. Some have shut down school buildings within their district, and some have shut down grade levels or teams. We do have to adhere to the Road Back to School guidance, as well as the guidance that we receive from the Department of Health. So, we are doing our research, and we have to have these planned options in our back pockets, if you will, because that's what good leaders do, and we know that things can change at any time. We just saw our governor make recent changes for restaurant and bar owners, as well as recreation sports when it comes to interstate play, and we're awaiting the NJSEA's decision for winter sports, which should come within the next couple of weeks. Every day is a new page in this chapter that we're living. So, I am grateful for everyone's understanding as we become more educated on this virus and how it affects schools, and what we do is not the same and may never be again. But what we have to do now is stay tuned with what's going on in our community, do our best to stay safe, and follow the guidelines that are set forth for us, okay? Okay, so with that said, we have a report tonight on student performance, and we have Ms. Lily Moss, who is our supervisor of ELA, and Mr. Steve Santilli, Assistant Superintendent, who's overseeing curriculum right now. And keeping in line with Boards of Education's calendar and superintendent reports, it is this time of year where we want to stand and share our students' performance. Most of this report was shared with the Curriculum Committee last week. We have data to share with you that we're proud of. But again, I want to remind you that this work does not come without a lot of effort. Ms. Moss presented to you a three- to five-year plan probably four years ago when she took over the position of supervisor of ELA, and she shared a plan that was different for our district. It involved different resources, but it also involved data, data collection, first producing data. That's work on the students and the teachers' part, then to be able to produce the data, collect the data, and then analyze the data. You know, that's a process in itself. But then, once you analyze it, to be able to apply it in a relevant way. So, I'm very proud of the work that she has done. It began with a vision, right? It began with her vision, putting the plan in place, and then being able to see the plan come to life with results. So, without further ado, two administrators will present to you student performance data for the Agrover Township School District.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Grucchio, and the board. So, we are going to first bear with us. We, you know, presenting in masks, a little unusual, just like teaching with a mask on, a little unusual, but we'll do our best to go through this information, and hopefully, everybody at home can also hear everything that we're presenting. It's going to be good to talk about student data for a little while because we've been talking mostly about COVID-related issues as of late, so it's good to shift a little bit. So, a couple of things that we're going to start with. First and foremost, one of the things that we wanted to focus on is just academic language. So, some of the things in terms of the tools that we have here in place and some of the processes as well. First, universal screening. So, you take a look at universal screening. It does talk about tiers of students. When you think about that, the simplest way for me to explain that is the fact that we compile data from students typically, for instance, in this particular case, let's say, grades two to eight, if you think of it that way. If you think of tiers, we're going to talk about RTI, and that's response to intervention. There's tier one, tier two, and tier three, and students are going to be tiered within those levels. In the beginning of this year, for instance, even though we're in unusual times, we still follow that same process. And one of the things that we wanted to be able to share tonight is that even though things are different, we are trying to remain consistent, and like Dr. Grucchio talked about, whether it's Ms. Moss's three-year, three-to-five-year plan, or any other supervisor for that matter, we are doing our best to stay the course, doing our best to make sure we are providing a level of academic instruction for our students, whether they're in person or virtual, to the best of our ability to be able to meet their needs. So, when you think about universal screening, those tiers, those groups of students were presented to the building principals, and in turn, what ends up happening is that we are able to then create classes, create cohorts, and things of that nature. Additionally, this year, on top of that, we had equity in mind, and one of the things that we really focused on was breaking down those tiers even further, and we broke them down by taking a look at male versus female cohorts and where students fell within tiers. And in addition to that, we also took a look at demographics, and we took a look at our Hispanic, our Black, our White students, and also broke them down according to tiers as well. All part of that process. RTI is something that you hear quite often about, and Ms. Moss is going to get in-depth with that tonight. Response to Intervention is what it stands for. It's a focus for grades K to eight, as it explains here. And also, really, what the focus of that is, let's say, when you think about remedial teachers, one of the things that they do is they really are going to, like we say here, double up that instruction. Focus in on where those needs are for our students. So, if you have a tier-two student, for instance, when you think about universal screening, what ends up happening is they may have a specific skill that they're lacking in, and our staff works very hard at making sure that we hone in on those skills, and that's where, for instance, in our current schedule, where that small group instruction, especially at the end of the day, comes in. That's just one example of many. When you think about Common and Formative Assessments, again, K to 12. We're going to dive into that a little bit tonight, too, and we're going to talk about things like Lincoln, for instance. The other thing that we do is we still have in play for our staff, of course, SGOs, that's Student Growth Objectives. Again, measuring where our students are in the beginning, being able to tier them, and be able to try to come up with a projection for where they're going to be when you get towards the end of the year in terms of their growth. And then, of course, PLCs, again, professional learning communities. I'm sure you've heard that term. We love acronyms, right? So, professional learning communities is where all this work takes place. And ultimately, yes, we might be in this unusual times, but professional learning communities are still taking place, and what ends up happening is our teachers and staff from grades K to 12 are really diving into all of this data, whatever it might be. Of course, it's everything that's listed up there, and then some. Lincoln is a tool that I mentioned. Ultimately, what it comes down to is we do administer Lincoln three times a year in the fall, which is the initial benchmark, and then again in the middle, middle of the year, in the winter, and then, of course, at the end of the year. This is really just kind of really get a gauge on the growth of the students, and then at the end of the year, one of the things that ends up happening is that's the correlation typically for the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, okay, formerly known as PARK, or even New Jersey ASK, if you want to really go back. But ultimately, what we do is we get a really good gauge on where our students are going to, how they're going to perform, let's say, on that assessment, and that's what the Lincoln tool does for us. We're also able to use the data warehouse within Lincoln, and we're going to walk through some of those things tonight as well. So, when we start talking about the dashboard, the way that we broke this presentation down tonight, as you're probably aware, we did not have a spring state assessment, okay? So, NJSLA last spring did not occur. So, one of the things that we're going to do, though, tonight, is we're going to take a look at the fact that we still, of course, move forward with our Lincoln assessment, and we gave a benchmark like we normally would in the fall. And we're going to take a look at what I would refer to as this 30,000-foot view of Lincoln, okay, snapshot of grade levels. We also have comparative data. Then, we're going to dive a little bit deeper, and then finally, even deeper, when we start talking about that small group instruction that takes place. So, the first piece here is a Lincoln dashboard. One of the things that we're able to do in our, it doesn't matter if you're a teacher, administrator, or even central office staff, we have the ability to use this dashboard to start breaking down student results. So, you see, typically, you're going to see, as we go through the next few slides, you're going to see these icons, and this is what the teachers will see. So, without being able to go into Lincoln live, because we have students and because we have teachers, we only took screenshots of things to be able to share tonight. We have student results, item analysis, class diagnostics, custom reports, and grouping. All of these things are very important to us to be able to break down and disseminate data that is within the Lincoln tool. The other thing we have are screenshots, as I mentioned. We're going to really be focusing on English Language Arts and Mathematics. This one is not comparative. If you see on the left-hand side, you have Grade Two, English Language Arts. You also have on the right side, Grade Two Math, and this is Form A. Form A for Lincoln is the first benchmark. So, that is Benchmark A, happens in the fall. Benchmark B would happen in the winter, and then final benchmark is Benchmark C. You can see those icons down the bottom. If we were in this live, we would be able to break this down and continue to break this information down as we were to go through. The big focus here is on meeting and exceeding, and then, of course, there's something called bubble students. Those are students that are right on that tier, just kids that we just want to maybe have to work with in small group instruction, just to get them over that hump. They may be struggling with a couple of skills, and then, of course, students below that typically would be what we call our Tier Two or Tier Three students that might need more interventions and more supports. So, if you take a look here, there's no comparative data because Grade Two is the initial benchmark. So, for the, you know, 2020, 2021 school year, this is where we're starting with our current Grade Two students, okay, just to give you an idea. Now, as we go through, it's going to flow in the same process, and I'm not going to spend a ton of time on every single one of these grade levels. However, I do want you to be able to see side by side, every time we pull this up, on the left side, you're going to see English Language Arts comparing one another. So, you have 1920 school year and 2021 school year. Now, the thing I want to point out is on the left, it's Grade Two for the 1920 school year. On the right, it's 2021, Grade Three. So, one of the things we chose to do for this presentation was compare like students. I want to really compare apples to apples. So, while the standards might be different in terms of how, what's being assessed, I wanted to see how the students are doing, because I think that one of the things that we would all agree upon was that last year, when we went into, all of a sudden, pivoted into this crazy virtual experiment that we're still living, we were fearful of how our students were going to continue to be able to perform and how they were going to do. So, of course, it was very important for us to just pull this information out. So, that is how this is going to be broken down as we go through Grade Three, Grade Four, and so on. To the right, it's the same thing. So, it's the 1920 school year, Grade Two students compared to 2021, Grade Three students. Again, for all intents purposes, we're comparing like students. One of the things that you're going to notice is that the data you will see as we progress looks good. So, from just a very cursory view, again, 30,000-foot view, when you take a look at an entire grade level, how they did in their second grade year compared to their third grade year in both English Language Arts and Mathematics, there's growth, which is very impressive for us, and it's a good sign, okay? And the reason why you could take a look at that, if you look at the meeting and exceeding, for instance, for a second grade year in ELA compared to the right side, you definitely have growth in here, and same thing, go from 13%, let's say, for math in the second grade, and you go up to, it looks like, about 46% in terms of meeting and exceeding in third grade. Again, same group of students, and that's what we're going to focus on as we go through these couple of slides. This is the same setup for Grade Four, again, comparing their third grade year to their fourth grade year in both Language Arts and Mathematics. And the fifth grade year, again, Grade Four compared to Grade Five for Language Arts and Mathematics. Take a look at that Grade Four number in here compared to the previous year. So, those are the things that we're really taking a close look at, and then, again, based off of how we can break this data down and take a look at specific groups of students, we're able to do that. Grade Six. Grade Seven. Current Grade Seven. The current Grade Eight. Now, one of the things I did want to point out is that in terms of our current Grade Eight in math, when we're normally here in the fall talking about performance assessment and data, one of the things that we typically will point out is even with our state assessment, we usually see a little bit of a decline from the seventh to eighth grade year in Mathematics. A lot of that has to do with many of the students from seventh to eighth grade year, they end up going into algebra or geometry. They're going to fall into that data subset, which removes them out of this mathematics for Grade Eight. So, it does typically negatively impact the information that we see. That's where we would dig a little bit deeper, take a look at the specific students, classes, and make determinations from there. So, here you don't have, you know, as we get into Grade Nine, things are a little bit different. So, Grade Nine, 10, and 11, as we progress, it's a little bit different in terms of how it's broken down, but here you can see Grade Eight, English Language Arts versus High School English One. Here you see Grade 10, English One versus English Two. And then, English Two versus English Three. In terms of algebra, keep in mind that there are different subsets here. So, in 2021, you can see here that it includes 54/7 and 117 eighth-grade students. They are actually part of this subset, and that's what I was referring to, that they get pulled out of that Grade Eight cohort. So, here you have High School Algebra One from 1920 compared to High School Algebra One for 2021. Geometry course comparison, it does include for 2021, it does include the 34 eighth-grade students. And then, Algebra Two course comparison, as seen here as well, from 1920 to 2021. So, we're going to come back, and we're going to revisit that in a minute, okay? However, we're going to dive a little bit deeper in terms of response to intervention, and Ms. Moss is going to go a little bit further in depth as we get into this.
Okay, so, as Dr. Grucio and Mr. Santilli mentioned, data is great, but then what you do with it. So, we have taken all this data from the universal screening, using Lincoln as one of them, and we're able to then tier the students so that we're able to hold a little bit deeper as to why our students who might not be meeting are exceeding, what the root of that is, and then being able to provide the services to fill in those learning gaps. So, for our Tier Three students, we have an academic team. We look at the data, we break it down, and then we put our students into an intervention for eight to 10 weeks. And bi-weekly data is then collected on those students, and we continually are looking mid and end to see if a change in program needs to happen.
Every time we do the universal screening process, we do look at all the students and how they are falling within the tiers. We do always look at students that we are currently in the RTI process so that we're sure that they're making the progress that they need. And for students who are not making progress, if they have had changes of program, sometimes then we go to the Child Study Team and go through the different processes to help students with whatever they need to help them succeed. Progress monitoring comes in a few different ways. Common assessments that we do within our own school and within teams and grade levels, we use those in comparison to something like the state assessment and Lincoln, as they provide us with what grade level mastery of standards looks like. So, both Lincoln and the state assessment tell us where students should be by the end of the year in each grade level. We then get that in the beginning of the year, and through progress monitoring and our common assessments, track student progress towards mastery of those standards and skills. So, as we're able to do those assessments and look at that data, we are then able to use those reports to help us prioritize curriculum, make adjustments as needed for the kids in front of us, and then, as Mr. Santilli mentioned, really work on that small group instruction. really work on that small group instruction, both in and outside the classroom with interventionists. So we have a new tool in Linkit. It is the Intervention Manager. It saves Sharon a lot of time on Excel, but it helps us manipulate data a lot easier this year. It's been wonderful and really allows us to look at students and not only what tier they're in, but with those universal screeners, how they're falling to get to that tier. Because as you can see from the screen, every Tier One kid is Tier One for a different reason. So we do use multiple measures so that we're able to, again, pinpoint students' strengths and weaknesses and help them grow from there. So this is a sample of what Tier One looks like. This is a sample for Tier Two. So again, you'll notice Tier Two students might be all over the place. And like Mr. Santilli mentioned before, this helps us narrow down maybe where they need that push or maybe where they just need that small group on certain skills or with, and helps us determine where we should dig a little bit deeper with those students. And then here's our Tier Three. So this is what we do for RTI. We look at these students really closely, we break this down and determine from here what double-dose kids need. So we communicate with the classroom teachers as well as the intervention teachers to ensure that these students are not only getting quality small-group instruction, but also that quality pull-out instruction so that you're making up for that lost time. So it's not replacement, it's in conjunction with so that students are able to accelerate that growth. So we collect all of that biweekly data that we collect on students, as well as the universal screeners, all within Linkit in what we call the Data Locker. So when an RTI teacher goes in, they're able to pull up forms. As you notice, there's, you know, four forms for an eight-week cycle, and then an end form that they also fill out to give lots of information on students. So this would be a sample of what teachers are reporting out, what level the students reading at, what they're working on. And then the little yellow post-it is where they can put notes about students' behaviors, reading behaviors, and academics. So the classroom teacher can go into Linkit and see exactly what's going on in intervention. They're able to see notes. And then we, as a team, are also able to follow up on students to see what's going on when they're in their interventions. Every student has everything that they've, every assessment that they've taken, everything that's been recorded out for them. Every teacher that is assigned to that student has access to this information. And these are just two different ways that you could look at it. So as a teacher, if I want to just focus on Language Arts, I can do it by subject. If I wanted to look at how a student performed last year, I can sort it by year. If I just want to look at Linkit, I can sort it by the test type. But it allows us to get a quick view. It's a great resource to share with parents, to be able to talk about students as well. When you're pulling reports, you can select data. This is just to show you how much we have, and this is just one of, as you can see on the bottom, lots of pages. It will track everything that we do. So we were talking about the other day, we did our kindergarten screening this year. Those kindergarten screening results went into Linkit. So now, as those kindergartners move all the way through our grade system, we will have all the information on those students from the time they're in kindergarten on. We can also look at students comparatively and look at the schools. We're able to see here, if I wanted to look at the different universal screeners, I can pull it down in this menu and very quickly see how each school did in comparison to the district. And then we can break it down even further into teachers and classes and students. Teachers can use this to create groups based on standards. So they can choose a class, choose what standards they want, and sort their students, and it helps them group their students. And I'm stopped.
Yep.
Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, look at that.
So to really just wrap it up and summarize, really what it comes down to is that I think there's, there's a lot of thanks. Typically, at this point, you know, I would thank the board for giving us the time to present. But I think ultimately what it comes down to is a simple fact that, you know, our parents are a huge part of this at home. They've been tasked with something that has been monumental, unprecedented, you know, in anybody's lifetime, coupled with, of course, our students. And being able to take these assessments seriously, doing the work that they need to do to really just stay on track. I mean, for those that are struggling, we want to continue to provide the supports. But I think, you know, really what it comes down to, plain and simple, that this really comes down to a huge thanks for our staff. It doesn't matter if you were a remedial teacher and an interventionist, all of our staff, support staff. This is, the results that we saw, you know, I usually tell it like it is. I really was dragging those results down. And when we were doing comparative data, I was almost like, all right, let's, let me see it because, because of what we're faced with. I don't think any other year I would have done that, but I'll be honest with you, this is EHT. And this is truly, really what it comes down to. This really makes us realize that we are EHT-strong, no matter what we're faced with. The results that we saw and where our students stand right now with that initial benchmark, comparing like students to previous years, we're exactly where we should be or even further along than where any of us probably would have anticipated that we would have been. So again, thank you to the staff, and thank you for really the entire school community.
And I just want to follow up on that by saying it's incredible to speak with the teachers and how hard they're working to maintain these best practices that are really difficult to do in a virtual setting, in a hybrid setting. But it's just the fact that they're setting timers to tell their kids when to go to their, you know, reading or math group or intervention during the Google Meet. And having those teachers track kids down and working really hard to just make it all work is incredible. But the data speaks for itself. We see it with our students. So just to echo what Mr. Santilli said, it's amazing. I'm in awe of everything that they do every day with it, but it's great work, and I do think that it's helping our students. So thank you for that continued support.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both. That concludes Superintendent's report.
Well, thank, thank you both very much for an outstanding presentation. And, you know, as we've all said, the thanks go to our teachers and to our staff for the great work that they're doing. And like we, you know, we're talking about earlier, despite all that's going on in the world, you know, our students are learning. Learning is continuing, and we saw, you know, a very good representation of it this evening. Do any board members have questions for our presenters before we move on? Okay, Mrs. Sullivan.
The page that showed where the students' individual problems were, do you share, not just share with the parent, but is a parent able to get that so they can work at home on certain, or is that not advisable?
Oh, the tiers?
No, not the tiers.
Like the individual student reports?
Right.
So that's definitely something, I don't think you could just send that home to a parent, but I do think that that is something that, that could definitely be discussed with a teacher and go through where, what we're noticing with that because it's very jargon-heavy, you know, and standards-heavy with how it's reported out. But it is useful to be able to show and to show progress or to be able to look at it and say, okay, this is, and we were talking about a student, I think with the curriculum committee, where it's, you know, we have a student who's read and read, but they made so much growth even though they were still not meeting. So I do think that it needs to be discussed, but yes, it's a great tool to lead those conversations, to be able to really pinpoint those strengths and weaknesses with, with, with parents, absolutely. It's a great communication tool.
Mrs. Berg.
Thank you. That was a great presentation. I have a question that's much concerned for the teachers implementing the data collection in classrooms during the RTI process. So we have less hours in a day to work with students, and they're dealing with in-person students, virtual students. So are, do you, does the district have tools for the teachers, like templates already for, okay, this student is weak in this area, you can use this form to collect the data? Or are they originating everything on that?
Oh, no, the RTI stuff?
Yes.
Oh, no, that's all made. It's all standardized so that, that, because otherwise it wouldn't be measurable comparatively.
Right.
So we have very strict forms that we use for read, for phonics or reading, where they fill it in and they do their, it's, it's all made and written.
For the data collection?
Yes.
Before they're in like Tier Three, though. I mean, if, if we have a student who is Tier Two and the teacher has to collect data on that for the RTI team?
Uh huh.
That's right.
Yes, we provide that for them.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, we provide that plan.
And then my next question, we saw a lot of the Form A data. So is there a possibility that some of that data might have been skewed a little because the kids were taking it at home? So I'm interested to see how that Form B data looks. I know it'll be great because our teachers are working so hard, but I had a point, and I forget it.
It's definitely a good point, and some, some staff had brought that up as, as a concern, and it's a valid concern. I would probably also say that I would have been even more shocked, though, if we were pulling this information, pulling this data, and it was, I feel like it probably would have been skewed even further than what it was. So I think, I think it's a fair representation. I don't think it's perfect, of course. And then, and there's also other factors that come into play when you start taking a look at statistics and data, that you have transient students, we have students that have chosen to be on homeschool, which means that they wouldn't be part of this data, and they may have been in previous years and so on.
I, thank you. You reminded me of my follow-up. So my, my question, my follow-up was that since you can disaggregate the data, are you able to pull out, say, a student who is in third grade all of a sudden and is sending scores that they're in sixth grade? Do you pull that out and then not rely on it as much?
Yes.
The teachers do.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Those outliers will definitely jump out. Once you start getting down and drilling down to the student level, it will definitely jump off the page.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right. Oh, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
Sorry, I'm in the corner. It's a good seat. Just Santilli said it's a good seat. So I just want to say I definitely enjoyed the presentation. I was able to see it upwards close here. And I guess my, my question, or just, just bringing up the concern, well, thank the, I want to thank the parent, the state, the teachers, and also the parents, too, because I think that virtual learning, hybrid learning, it is not, it's, it's not easy to do and to get your children to attend a task at home in an environment where they're supposed to be like, you know, more free, where they have to do school. So it's definitely the whole concept of it takes a village, it's, thank all our villagers. And I was thinking about the special ed students. And I mean those students who, those inclusion students, those pull-out resource students. I'm, I'm just thinking about, were they, were they included in this data? And I'm I'm just concerned about the special ed students and in general, just being kept up to speed. And also about, is the LLI still being used?
Yeah.
In the small groups? And do we, and I wanted to make sure, do we have, is it Orton-Killeham or is it the Wilsons or is it a combination of?
We primarily use phonics first, which is an Orton-based program. Yes, we have a few people, very few, that do Wilson, but it's.
Okay, okay. Because I do know that there are some teachers who that's their, that's what they do, the LLI, all day. Now, you know, they focus on.
Phonics first, yeah.
Yes. So I just wondered if you could touch base on those?
Sure.
See where they are? Because I'm, I'm concerned that there may not be, they may not be.
So the LLI students are who we track through the, the data that I showed you. They put biweekly data in on those students. And then all the special education students who take a state assessment take the universal screeners as well. And then for the other students, it's obviously directed through IP goals and special ed department, but they're included.
So the student, how many, so how would a student qualify to be a part of the, I keep saying LLI, but.
Our task.
How do they, how many grade levels do you have to be below in order for you to be a person that we consider to be looked at?
It's usually a few measures. Yeah, it's multiple measures, so it depends. So I can get you the metrics on it. It's, it's hard to say, just like pinpoint that. It's usually two grade levels below is, is the starting point, but it depends on the tool.
What, are there other services that are in place?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Back to Mrs. Berg.
Thank you. So I, I know we have our self-contained students in five days a week, right? Or four, five?
Five.
Five. Are students that are not in a self-contained setting but still have multiple learning disabilities, has there been any discussion on bringing them into school in a phased kind of way to address their needs more frequently than the hybrid schedule allows? Because like Mrs. Gilbert Floyd mentioned, I'm also really concerned about those students and the ability for us to meet their needs in a way that is appropriate for their learning styles virtually. So I wasn't sure if that was part of a discussion or at any point that will be part of a discussion to maybe key in on our students that are struggling in our inclusion settings, those students, because not all of them are able to be successful right now. And I am very concerned that they're going to fall further behind.
So we, we have had conversations, and I think ultimately what it comes down to is that there's a big difference when you think, when you think about scheduling. I think that's where the biggest challenge lies, of course. Elementary is probably going to be a little bit easier to manage than it would be at the secondary level, and mainly because of the simple fact that depending upon the student's IP, for instance, at times they may have two classes that they're, let's say, in a learning resource room, where maybe two of their core classes are going to be like an in-class support setting. So because of that, there are some challenges. However, it's a good point you bring up in starting to take a look at the data. We have had some cases, and it's right now hasn't been a full phase approach of, of that. But maybe, for instance, now that we have Form A data and we can take a look a little deeper, ultimately, we have had a case-by-case. I do have some students right now, based off of needs, based off of doctor's notes and the like, they are attending, I wouldn't say it's not five days a week, but they're actually attending within both cohorts. So they're attending four days a week.
Yeah.
And that's what I mean. There's a small subset of that where it's happening already. And that's been funneling through our special education supervisors, our directors of special education, and even at times, our school doctor gets involved with assessing medical notes for, you know, to meet needs.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead then. We're going to transition to Finance and Operations, and I'm going to ask for our committee report.
Our committee met yesterday here in Alder. In attendance were myself, Mr. Price, Mrs. Salagian, and Ms. Amaya. One of the first things we discussed was our preschool expansion grant. It's possible for us to receive a preschool expansion grant. Presentation to the board, this is new, it will be next, next week, they're going to present the whole program. There's a very short timeline. The grant is due November the 30th. The award notice comes out December 18th. And then we have to have it implemented up and running by February 1st. This is a really short span, so our administration's really going to have to put a lot of work in there. So I appreciate them doing that. Transportation, our transportation coordinator, we had people apply. They will be interviewed this Thursday. Oh, excuse me, I'm wrong on that. We are in need of more drivers, so we're going to re-advertise for drivers in transportation. Right now, we have 11 vacancies either through leaves or for necessity. Let's see. Food service, food service has really been, always been profitable here in EHT, and Mr. Beck really takes great pride in that and all of his staff. With everything that has gone on according, you know, according to COVID, we've had to provide a lot more meals. He's now in the red, where normally he may have bring in about a million dollars. He's now in the red where normally he may have, uh, bringing in about a million dollars a year to cover all of his programs. He is losing over a hundred thousand dollars a month, every month. So this is the first time that he's going to have to come to us looking for money where normally it's a self-sufficient program. Uh, let's see. Facilities update, our facility director and supervisor transition. There were applicant, six applicants. They're going to be doing the interviews, um, this week. Hopefully we'll have something for agenda for next week's meeting. The vestibule update, everything is up and running. Uh, we only have a tick list now, little, small little things that need to be tweaked and it'll be fully, uh, operational. Our fire alarm system at SWIFT, which we knew we had to make repairs to, it has been put on for, through the government estate that we have to watch 24 hours a day for about two weeks until it's up and running. This is going to cost us about $57,000 just to keep, uh, people in there watching to make sure nothing happens to the prop, the property. And this is, uh, state mandated. Uh, we did have some big approved projects for 2021. We had asphalt at, uh, let me see where, what we had. We have roofs at Slaybach Primary and High School. We're going to put those on hold due to the cost. It came in much higher than we thought. Miller Parking Lot, we are also going to have to put on hold. And also we have a concern that anything that is petroleum-based, the prices are really going to go high. So we have to take that into consideration as, as far as, um, more money spent than we thought we would do. The state has come in and said they will give two cloth masks. This, these are just, uh, little facts. Two cloth masks for every student, so we'll have those available soon. Uh, we have the audit taking place right now, so as soon as that is completed and if they're ready to present to us, they will. And we also have a tabletop, tabletop audit from the government. They want to know how we spent the funds that we've received from them for COVID. And that'd be that. Oh, finally, we do have a budget calendar coming out. This is going to be all the extra meetings we're going to have, um, for the budget. They're going to be open to the public. And we'll get busy with next year's budget. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Chandra, what do you have to add?
Uh, just for the board members to take a look in your, um, in your board docs, there is an attachment with a tentative board cal, budget calendar. Um, it has to be posted on our website. I want to talk to you about it first. Anything approval needs presentation. Um, there are numbers on the presentations. Um, there are 13 specific areas we want to present to you prior to the budget process. For example, like Dr. Gruccio says, a three- or five-year plan, uh, for different curricular areas, um, specialized facilities, that sort of thing. So they're just numbered one through 13 for now. As we, um, schedule that, I think we'll be updated on that budget calendar. The biggest change or biggest notice for you guys is December's committee meetings. Based on the administrative side, we don't believe we need committee meetings in December, but it can be, um, can wait for a month. And that would allow us to then present more curricular areas at that date versus having committee meetings, which is, uh, December 2nd, I believe, if I remember correctly. Uh, December 1st. Um, we're going to do, it's a committee meetings we're going to have, um, of what we may want to advertise for, we'll have it right here some amount of, and be able to, um, present some more curricular areas. It definitely much is a highlight. Has, uh, there are alternative dates. They have not come out with the election calendar for next year to know when their governor will release his budget and what are our, what are our due dates. I kind of estimate it based on history.
Any questions from board members, finance, operations? Okay, uh, we're going to move on to curriculum and, uh, I'll just see if Mr. Santilli has anything additional. Or, uh, are there any of the, yeah, committee members maybe and, and Mrs.?
Yeah, Mr. President, Mr. Price.
Absence.
I just have a report from Amy, since she's not here tonight.
Oh, perfect.
I can read her report. Um, a lot of it touches base on what we already talked about, which is pretty unique, so everything's rolling together smoothly. And that was a great presentation, Mr. Santilli. Thank you very much. But as far as the curriculum committee is concerned, on November 2nd, 2020, the curriculum committee met. In attendance were myself, Dr. Gruccio, Ms. Moss, Mr. Price, me, Mr. Dela Barca, Ms. Byrd, and Mr. Santilli. At this time, there were no items that needed board approval. Information items discussed were the armed services vocational aptitude battery test, which is scheduled for November 9th. Students to arrive by 8:00 AM. Online test begins at 8:15 and will last approximately 3.5, 4 hours. There will be approximately 24 students who will take the test. All health screening protocols will be followed. The hybrid teaching and learning expectations for students can be found on the EHT website. Teachers receive copies of this as well as their own hybrid teaching and learning expectations. Next item was 2020, 2021 SGO process was reviewed. Uh, the fourth thing was the RTI information was shared and reviewed at length. This included an assessment memo sample, RTI protocol 2021, I and R S academic referral. Packet, link it, intervention manager, which is more user-friendly and will help with organizing and interpreting data, that data, I'm sorry, and data locker, which is used to build RTI groups. So, um, this is pretty much what we have. Uh, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Very good. Anything to add?
Nothing to add, but thank you very much. Uh, and thanks for the continued support.
Any questions for board members in, uh, curriculum? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead, uh, and move into policy and ask for our policy committee report.
Policy, which I like to say is the most exciting committee. Where we have the most fun and we laugh, even with policy. It's an inside joke. Everyone says the policy is boring, but I think it's exciting. And we miss, we do miss Mr. Santilli, though. Thank goodness we have Dr. Herry who's. Who, who's. Who, who has, who has been burdened with the policy committee. So anyway, on Monday, November 2nd, 2020, the members of the policy committee met virtually to discuss, to discuss agenda items. Present at the virtual meeting were Mrs. Amy Halk Elko, uh, Pete Castellano, Kristy Byrd, Marita Sullivan, myself, and, um, of course, Dr. Herry. Uh, the following policies and discussions took place at the meeting on November 2nd, 2020. The policy committee reviewed 10 policies and regulations that will be required, that will require board approval. Some of the policies and regulations were from the most recent Strauss SMA mandated policy alert. While one was related to the COVID-19 pandemic and the New Jersey Department of Education throwback. It is the recommendation of the committee that action is taken on nine policies and regulations at both the work session and regular board meeting during the month of November. Policies and regulations related to mandated Strauss SMA policy alerts were reviewed and discussed as follows. Here come the numbers. Regulation 1582, domestic violence mandated, new. Final reading, first reading, board approved, 10/27/2020. Policy 2431.3, heat participation policy for student athlete safety, mandated, revised, single reading. Policy number 5320, immunization, revised, single reading. Policy and regulation 5610, suspension, mandated, revised, single reading. Policy number 5620, expulsion, mandated, revised, single reading. Policy and regulation 8320, personnel record, which is mandated, revised, single reading. Policy related to man, policy related to mandated pandemic COVID-19 response and the New Jersey Department of Education throwback were reviewed and discussed as follows. Policy number 1648.03, restart and recovery plan. Full-time remote instruction mandated, new, final reading, and the first reading, board approved on 10/27/2020. Additionally, policy 2270, uh, religion in schools revised, revisions were reviewed and put on hold pending further review by, uh, the board attorney. The policy will be revised at the next policy meeting, if we, you know, if we have a next policy meeting, December 1st, 2020. And again, this is why policy is so exciting. Thank you.
That was exciting.
Yeah.
Anything from Dr. Herry?
Nope, just, uh, the, the fact that the last, uh, policy that was put on hold pending additional review, um, it states that will be put on the December 1st meeting. We will not be having a meeting on December 1st because we'll start the budget process. So the next policy ma, meeting, uh, whenever that occurs, probably in January, uh, you may see that revision up for the board's consideration with some other policies. But we're good to go.
All right, good. Thank you.
And I really do enjoy the policy meetings. I, I really do.
Thank you, Dr. Herry. I'll give you your five dollars later.
Do we have any comments or questions on policy? Okay, is it for policy? Okay, uh, so we have to, uh, discuss another item, uh, as I think everyone is aware. Mr. Ellis resigned, uh, November 4th and left us. He was, I saw him here. Know that he's, uh, still here and, uh, was, uh, then sworn in on township community that, that very same day. As a board of education, we have 65 days to, uh, make a replacement, uh, for, for that spot. So I am going to call a special meeting for the, um, Tuesday, November the 24th. It's two weeks from this evening at 6:00 PM and, uh, we will advertise. And, um, we'll follow the, um, uh, process that we've used in the past where we will ask for all replies, uh, to come in by 5:00 PM on November the 23rd. We'll ask for a, uh, a letter of interest as well as a resume. And, um, we're going to have, uh, as we have in the past, Ms. Anaya reach out to New Jersey school boards and work with Dr. Gruccio and, uh, Ms. Halk Elko to put our questions together. I would just ask no more than 10, uh, so that we can keep the process moving. If we can do it with less than 10, that's just fine. Seven, eight, that's, that's perfect. But, uh, they will put the questions together. Board members will not see the questions. I will not see the questions. And Ms. Anaya will ask the questions. Board members will not ask questions so that every applicant will be asked the exact same set of questions. And, uh, we will then, uh, so that will take place in open session, the, uh, Q and A. Uh, we would then, um, deliberate an executive session and, uh, hopefully be able to agree, uh, on an applicant to, uh, to be appointed. Following that, of course, any applicant, successful applicant has to under, undergo the fingerprinting and background check process. So that's, uh, that is that item. And, uh, we have a updated board calendar, uh, out, but now we'll update it again for next week, uh, to include the 24th. And, uh, you know, in these times, we may have to add more meetings yet. So that brings us to NJSPA. Anything new for us, Lou?
Well, the correct, thank you, Mr. President. The correct date for our county Y E, I scared all the board members, but it is December 2nd. It'll be a seven o'clock virtual meeting for all county members and, uh, the program has not been determined yet, so I can't do that yet, but, uh, it should be a problem. Thank you. Hopefully, everybody can stand.
Thanks, Lou, for that. All right, so we are now, uh, at the time where we are going to take, uh, a public comment. And we know how that goes, uh, three minutes, uh, each. And, um, remember, we can't talk about personnel or litigation. And if there's a complex question, it may be that someone would have to get back to you with the answer. So any, any comments or questions from the public, please? Please come forward and, and join us. All right. Okay, all right.
I was just messing with Mr. Ellis. I thought he was, Mr. Ellis had something to say.
He's gonna, well, he's gonna wait, okay. So, all right, so before I, before I then go to, um, board members, I want to, um, just, uh, well, two things. So I, a, a board member had asked me, uh, a few meetings back, uh, when we do board member comments, to try going around in order to give everyone a chance to speak. But another board member came to me tonight and said they didn't really care for that. So I want to get a feel for how you prefer we do it. I can just say other board member comments and recognize people or we can go around. Do, do folks have a preference as to how we do it? I'm just trying to accommodate.
I think that you should just ask if anybody has anything they want to say, um, let them speak voluntarily instead of putting somebody on the spot because maybe they don't have something to say.
Okay, any other views? That's fine by me.
I would just want to say that, um, I think that's fine. Just if somebody has a comment, they can get a comment. If they don't have anything to say, then they just don't say anything. We could, I mean, it's, it's not a big deal.
Well, I just wanted to check because.
To me, at least, I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to check again because I, you know, I was asked to do it that way by a board member who said they had observed, uh, another board do it that way and that it gave everyone, you know, a chance. So I, you know, I gave it a try.
Yeah, Pete, Mr. Price, I just want to say, I think it worked out okay. I really didn't have a problem with it either way. Waited my turn and then we weren't jumping on each other as much when you, you know, kind of stepping on each other. So you knew your turn was going to come up and you could say something or you could say nothing to report or whatever. So I kind of like the idea, but it doesn't really matter to me how we want to do it.
Okay, so I guess the consensus is we'll return to the, to the old, uh, the old method, um, at least for now. And so before we do that, uh, I, I want to return just very briefly so that we can discuss, um, our form of meeting. So again, we had a fully in-person meeting tonight in accordance with the new regulation. And, uh, I'm, I'm looking for, um, sort of a consensus on how we feel that went. Do we want to now, you know, absent anything that, that may change our circumstances where we might have to go virtual again. Certainly hope that's not the case, but going forward, um, staying with a full in-person meeting, um, according to the regulations, our comments are in person and board members, uh, can no, cannot participate in that meeting remotely. Go ahead, go ahead, Mrs. Hall.
Everybody knows that I wanted to come back, uh, to our fully in-person meeting, but if that is keeping, Ms. Summers is out tonight. If it's because she did not want to come in person, uh, that's kind of unfair, so I really don't know. You know, I prefer to be 100% in person, but since she is not able to participate tonight, that kind of steps on her rights as a board member. that kind of steps on her rights as a board member.
Go ahead, Mrs. Gouger Floyd.
Um, I just want to say that, you know, when we came back to full, when we came back to in-person meetings, you said, you know, if the children were back in school, then we would be back. But I also think that the children, I mean, they have the choice of, you know, they can be in, it can be in-person, or it can be, you know, they can choose virtual. And I think, like you said, you know, absent from whatever happens with, what's going on with the virus, I do think that we should always consider the health and welfare of, of our board members and our public, whether it's in-person or whether it's virtual for person, let's say for person, for whatever reason, they can't be at the meeting, let's say if someone happens to, you know, come down with COVID-19, but they still want to attend the meeting. I think in that situation, that person should be able to still attend the meeting. So I think, it sounds like we, I'm saying that, I think we need to have that as our option if, if we can. If that's, if it's under the regulations, if a person has to, or for health reasons, that a person cannot be here, if they're putting themselves at risk for, say, if they have a pre-existing condition. I don't think that being an elected official means that you'd have to, you know, put yourself on the sword to prove that you're faithful.
I'm gonna let Ms. Elko just explain the two kind of meetings.
Sure. So we've been talking about coming to person, coming in person once kids are back in school, and that's what we are. But nobody anticipated that there would be regulations promulgated right at the same time that give a lot of very specific criteria if the district does want to go in either a hybrid format, which is some board members in person, some board members participating virtually or via telephone, or full virtual. So if the board chooses to go either hybrid or full virtual, it does make a difference because we have to change how, one, we're noticing the meeting to the public. Two, we have to create a separate email account like we did at the last meeting and allow email comments to board meetings prior to the board meeting for public participation. Three, you have to allow not only the virtual streaming for people to view it that way, but you also have to add an additional phone line for people that don't have access to technology to listen in to the meeting via telephone. Four, you have to have another phone line for people to call into meetings. And you have to have that phone line have the availability to have a queuing feature. So whether you're using it through a web-based technology platform or some other type of platform, you need that queuing feature so people can wait in line in the order when they called. You also have to have the ability to mute all of those different items so that nobody can cause a disruption on that public line or public viewing platform. So there are a lot of intricacies that go into this. And this decision, I think, is something that the board really needs to consider. Number one, is it something you want to do? And then number two, really talk to technology. We did the best we could at the last meeting by changing the notice, providing the phone lines. But if we're going to continue to do it, we'll have to see, do we have the ability for the queuing feature? What do we need to do from an IT perspective to either purchase items or see what we have in district to comply now with all of those new regulations? So that is something to consider, and it's not something that we can just simply say a day before a board meeting, oh, we want to do it hybrid. It's something that has to be noticed in advance and has to be clearly noticed in advance.
So you see what we're, what we're, you know, wrestling with here, trying to navigate this? So, you know, I guess I'll look for some, some further thoughts and I'll go...
Okay.
I'll go right in order. There you go.
Um, I just want to say that I think, first, I would thank you, Ms. Elko, for all the details about, you know, what it's going to take to do that. I still think that, I think we need to, you know, ask that question of our IT department. Is that feasible? Is there something that we can do? Is there an additional cost? Although I think we need to have the information before we say, you know, no, we're not doing it, or yes, we are, or what have you. Because it, it does sound like it's a little complicated, probably a little inconvenient. But with the fact that if we, you know, look at what's taking place right now, and I am not a scientist and I'm not a medical person, but I'm just saying that with the number of cases rising, this may be something that we need to seriously consider. And I just think we need to have all the information if we can do it, just like we did with the whole live streaming and getting everything going. We had to, you know, go through a few quotes and just get the information. That's, that's my opinion.
Mrs. Sullivan was next? Okay.
Okay, Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. President, Mr. Price, I agree with what everybody was saying. And I think that we need to have a plan ready to go.
It's a pivot.
So let's just have something in place. In the event conditions change and we need to do it, we can do it quickly. So that's my comment.
I think as long as we have staff and students in the building, we should continue with our in-person meetings and make accommodations if IT says it's feasible. But, and like Mr. Price just said, if the situation arises where we need to switch to all virtual, we should be prepared.
Well, absolutely. So we're going to be ready to go all virtual. And I guess what we're deciding now is, are we going to do a hybrid board meeting, which is the mix of, you know, in-person and remote, which is both for board members as well as for public? Do we, do we have the capability to do it? And is that what we want to do? Go ahead, Mrs. Byrd.
Thank you. I agree that I think we need a little more research and a little more information from IT and cost things. Of course, we'd have to be prepared, so, you know, we have to come up with some kind of plan. But I agree that if the students and staff are in the building, then, you know, we can be here for sure. But I do find that any way we can encourage public participation in our meetings, whether people come to the meeting or whether they can call in or email, their concerns or questions for, you know, they want to praise something that our staff did great. I think that's a very positive thing. It's just bringing more people into the process. So I hope that we can somehow kind of make this work so that people who can't make it to our meetings can still have a voice and still participate and still be educated on what we're actually doing here and not reading about things only on social media that have been twisted. So I, I look forward to gathering more information.
Okay, so, all right, go ahead, Mrs.
I was just going to say that we are, I believe, live streaming tonight, so that is the difference. Prior, we would be taping and then airing it a few days later. So considering that we're allowing the public the opportunity for those that can't come tonight, they are at least being able to watch us live and then watch us again in the future if they missed it tonight. So that is a start, I think, to what you're talking about, Mrs. Byrd. And I think Mrs. Anaya had something to share as well about the IT piece, maybe.
Possibly, yes. So as the board secretary, just to gather what I'm hearing here, what I see here, we are prepared for one extreme, physical. We can have live meetings, we're doing it tonight, everybody's here. We are prepared for virtual, the pivot Mr. Price spoke about. That's ready, we've done it, been there. It's the hybrid that Mr. Castellano was talking about. The hybrid with what Mrs. Hauck Elko explained of the calls, the audio, that piece. So I will talk to IT and follow to find out. We did it last time, but it was the queuing process, the mute process. We did it because it changed, it will all change really quickly and we have to adapt. But now I will look into that, that's what I'm hearing tonight.
Okay, so that leaves us with, what shall we do for next Tuesday while we're gathering the information?
I, I think, I'm just saying my opinion. For next week, I think we, we do in-person for next, for next week. And I just want to go back to, I think it's really important to have the piece where, where you have families that, or, you know, adults and families that can't, can't come to the meeting. Because if you look at our meetings, you know, if you look in the audience, even when we don't have, when COVID wasn't in place, we usually do have the same, you know, hardcore folks that come out to all the meetings. We don't have many people in person. I think having that piece where people can call in if they can't make it to the meeting, I think that does allow the public opportunity to call in and speak and, and share. And some people say, well, if that's important, you should try to come. But some people really can't make it for whatever reason, so.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is next week is going to be fully live in-person, just as this week is. We're going to gather information and have a, have a report, and then we'll make a decision for December if, if it's feasible for us to do not only the live, the live streaming, but also the virtual participation. Clear? Good? Is that, is that where we all are? Good, good. And I think that's a good, a good idea. Good. So now I'll ask if any board members have comments. Other than our meetings, which we've...
Well, Mr. Price?
Sure.
I have a comment. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for coming out tonight and hello to everybody at home. And continue to stay tuned, continue to stay in contact with your schools. If there's anything that we need or that you need, I mean, we're here to help. Call your principals, whatever situations may occur. I mean, we hear you and we're here to, to respond. So I think that it's important that you keep up the good communication with us. And everybody, have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Price. Anyone else? Any other board members' comments? Okay. All right, so seeing none, then I'm going to prepare for us to adjourn again and thank everyone for coming out for our, for our first work meeting of November. And we have obviously a lot of work to do. So thank you again to staff. Thank you again to our great teachers. Thank you again to administration. Thank you, board members. These are difficult times. Best wishes to our students. I know it's not easy, but we wish you all the best. And I know there's great things going on in our schools. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Show of hands, and we are adjourned. Thank you all. We will see you next week for our regular meeting.
Thank you.